I would like to call the meeting to order. Good evening and thank you for tuning into our virtual city council special meeting of March 22, 2021, as we continue to follow public health guidance to avoid the spread of COVID-19. Before we get started, I want to briefly go over the public comment procedures for the evening. There will be one opportunity for public comment on the study session item only, which will take place during item number four after staff's presentation and council discussion on the item. As a reminder, this is a study session and no formal council action will be taken. To speak during public comment, please use the raised hand feature on Zoom to speak. If you're joining the teleconference by phone, you may raise your hand by dialing star nine and star six to unmute your microphone when prompted. Please only raise your hand at the time that the item on which you are speaking is called. The allotted time for public comment may be adjusted if there are a large number of speakers. Council members Aguirre, Espinoza, Garnica, G, Ready, and Smith, Vice Mayor Hale, and myself will participate by teleconference pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N-29-20. The city council chambers will not be open to the public. The meeting is being broadcast live to Redwood City residents on a Stown broadband cable channel 26 and Comcast cable channel 27, AT&amp;T U-verse channel 99, and are streamed live via the city's website at www redwoodcity.org. As a reminder, we are now enabling video when city council members, city staff, and guest presenters are speaking. We ask for your patience with any technical difficulties. I would now like to ask our city clerk if she will call the roll.
Good evening. Councilmember Aguirre.
Here.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Here.
Councilmember G.
Here.
Councilmember Ready.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hale. Oh, Vice Mayor Hale just joined us.
Here.
And Mayor Howard.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to item number three, our study session 3A, Land Use Economics Overview Study Session, an overview of fiscal impacts of various land use development types on the city's general fund. I'd like to ask Community Development and Transportation Director Mark Munzer. He will introduce the item, and Jason Moody from Environmental Planning Services or EPS will give a presentation. Mr. Munzer?
Good evening, Mayor Howard, members of city council. If we could go to the next slide, please. As you noted, I am joined tonight by Jason Moody, who will give the subject presentation this evening. But I wanted to take a few moments to frame this topic for you and provide some additional context as you listen to the EPS presentation. I'm also joined tonight by Principal Planner Anna McGill, who is the city staff lead on this project, and I would like to thank her and the team as always for all their work going into tonight's study session. As noted on the slide, listed are the agenda items for the study session, and EPS will be presenting this in more detail. Next slide, please. As noted in the staff report, land use decisions are complex and typically involve a wide range of factors prior to a decision being made by the city. The city council ultimately must weigh a series of impacts that range greatly. They range from equity to economic development, environmental sustainability, public health and safety, as well as transportation and public transit, just to name a few considerations. And another aspect of these decisions is how they impact the city's financial sustainability. And we will begin to have that conversation with you this evening. This study session is intended to provide you with background consideration, background information, and is not a consideration of any specific development project. As you know, the city must make certain required land use findings when reviewing discretionary planning projects. Though we have retained economic consultants to begin to review the economic value of certain development projects and the value of their associated community benefits. Next slide, please. A few notes on the presentation content that will be described. One, this is meant to be a high-level analysis, and its findings are intended to be used for informational purposes only to understand the potential fiscal implications generated by new proposed new development. Two, it's a snapshot. It's a snapshot of the impacts of certain land uses on the city's budget, specifically its general fund, and also to help identify the costs and revenues associated with individual land use types. Three, it's not to be confused with an economic analysis. An economic analysis is much broader in scope, and it looks at many more impacts that land use development has on our local economy. Next slide, please. The analysis considers both the general fund costs and revenue in order to identify the net impact of each land use category. And you'll hear net impact a lot this evening. The net impact is the difference between the revenue received minus the cost the city encourages to service these land uses. When we refer to residential land uses, we mean both single and multifamily uses, though we do distinguish the net fiscal impacts by residential type. Non-residential uses refer to office, industrial, and retail. And again, though they are collectively viewed as non-residential, you'll see they each have net impacts based on their specific land uses. And one final note, the result of the analysis is on a net per unit. And again, EPS will speak to this, but a net per unit means it's done by dwelling units, if it's for single family or multifamily, and it's done by a thousand square feet per development for the non-residential uses. Next slide, please. Here are the questions for city council this evening. These are just meant to start the conversation, and we certainly welcome any other questions or input. We will share this slide at the end of the EPS presentation, and I will now turn it over to Jason. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Jason Moody. I'm a managing principal at Economic and Planning Systems and happy to be here. We can go to the next slide. And the next slide. So some of this will be repeating what Mark had mentioned, but we look at these five different land uses, single-family, multifamily, office, industrial, retail, and our goal is to to understand the relative fiscal impacts of these land uses, both looking at kind of the existing situation and then when you have new development and how those outcomes might change. So we can look at a specific development project. Hopefully, we built a model that'll allow us to do that. We do a few case studies at the end here, but we're going to focus on the kind of macro findings, and then we can answer questions about the case studies at the end. We looked at two different model runs, mainly because you're in a kind of a unique situation right now with with the pandemic, and that has had an impact on a lot of revenue items, and particularly not so much the cost side, but some cost items as well. But typically, you know, retail sales and hotel taxes and things like that are down. So we look at what we call typical conditions, which was based on the FY 1920 fiscal year, 1920 budget. And then we look at the so-called COVID conditions, which are based on 2021 revised values. I would say that the numbers that we're going to show, most of them are going to be focused on the typical conditions. The detailed technical report that we'll be providing later will have both information in there. And if you have a specific question, we can answer that with regard to both typical and the COVID. But the numbers that we're going to show you will be mostly on the conditions. You can go to the next slide. And again, just following up on what Mark said, there are some important things we want to talk about, how to interpret these results. One, it is a snapshot, as he pointed out. We have two snapshots, as I mentioned before, but based on what you currently have with regard to tax rates, which can change, service levels and costs, those can change, occupancy rates, transaction, sales tax data, and your population and your demographics, all those things can change. So we just take a shot, a snapshot of the way it is today and use that as a baseline analysis. And also, the results are what we call indicators of fiscal performance. In reality, in the long term, a city doesn't really have the ability to finance reoccurring deficits, so you won't. You know, just because something shows up as potentially negative or positive, usually, you know, cities kind of work their budget so that they are essentially balanced every year. So that if they have to, they cut costs, or in some case, they spend more. If they have more money than they thought, and they provide more services or, you know, phone projects they were not able to fund if they didn't have those surpluses. So these are just fiscal indicators. That doesn't mean you'll have a budget deficit or surplus, because obviously you can't run long-term deficits. You can go to the next slide. The actual outcomes are obviously going to depend on things that are both related to the land uses that we look at, but also to things that are external to our model, things like market and business cycle conditions, changes in state or federal policies. You have labor agreements that affect your costs, things like that, that we again snapshot, but those things in the long run will change those structural things. And finally, this one lens concept, very, very important. We have a laundry list of things that this doesn't address below: traffic, your jobs housing balance, housing affordability, meeting your housing needs allocation, the need for economic diversity. You don't, you know, just for example, it's because retail performs really well, for example, doesn't mean you want to have retail everywhere, because that's not going to meet other goals, and it probably wouldn't even be successful. So economic diversity is obviously important. Community character is important, urban form, environmental sustainability. You have a climate action plan that you guys are working on that wants to concentrate growth in TOD locations and things like that. Again, those are all very important considerations. Fiscal impact analysis is an important lens, obviously, but not the only one. So we just wanted to stress that. It's something that's an input to your decision-making, but it's not a determinant in your decision-making. So with that, I think we go to the next slide. I want to talk a little bit about the data and methodology. We'll have a detailed technical memo that will get into that in more detail if you're interested in that some bolt of this, but we can go to the next slide. So the key things that we see driving general fund revenues in our model are assessed value, and that's, you know, both differences between new assessed value and new development and existing assessed value. Taxable sales by residents and employees, they all spend money on sales tax and that generates revenue to the general fund. Hotel nights, we do some analysis on how many hotel nights you'd expect per resident or per employee, and that goes into the model. And property turnover rate, another important revenue item. Because the more property turns over, the more revenue the city gets, both in terms of reassessing the property value, as well as you have a property transfer tax that helps. On the drivers for your general fund costs, the ones that are in the model, are public service population, both residents and workers are part of your public service population that drives your costs. And then your department costs, we have a portion of your department costs that are, we consider more or less fixed, meaning they don't really, they don't really move with growth that significantly. And then there's a point that's more variable, and there are some that are not impacted because their cost recovery or other factors, they don't really affect it by population growth or employment growth. So we kind of divide your budget up in those different buckets, and we did we did vet those assumptions with your finance department and your department heads to make sure we were on the right track there. You can go to the next slide. So I think something that you're going to find that throughout this presentation that's very, very important is the impact of Prop 13 on assessed value. And assessed value from property tax is a really, really big, important component of your general fund revenues. And as you can see, the existing assessed values for property in general by all land use categories is a lot less than the actual market value of those properties, and that's because of Prop 13. And the blue line shows you what the market value of a single-family house is, the market value of a multifamily house. And the gray is the assessed value on average in the city. As you can see, for example, your average assessed value for a single-family house is $642,000. The actual market value, if you've sold that average house in Redwood City, would be 1.6, close to $1.7 million. And you can go down the line for multifamily, on the office, industrial, and retail, that's expressed on 1,000 square feet. And again, per thousand square feet, the assessed value is generally much lower than the market value. And so when you do have property that turns over, sales, transacts, new development, you get to reset the assessed value at the market value, and that generates a big, I would call it a windfall, if you will, to the city's general fund. You can go to the next slide. The other concept that's important to our analysis is the, what we call service population. And for doing that, we had the equivalency factor between a resident and a worker, and that equivalency factor is one resident to 0.4 workers. In other words, a resident has a slightly higher burden on the city's services than does a worker. And we base this on commute patterns and how much time each one spends in the city and factors like that. And that's how we come up with that relationship, again, vetted with your city staff. And it's kind of intuitive. Obviously, not every resident is that much greater than a worker, but it's an average across the whole city. So generally speaking, workers, because a lot of them don't live in the city, they just come there during the day, and then they leave and go home, they didn't really have a less of an impact than their typical resident. We can go to the next slide. And this is just a snapshot of your general fund revenues. Again, this isn't part of our model. It's the input into our model. This is just what your general fund revenues are. And you can see you get a lot of money from property tax and sales tax, two big slices of that pie. And then, you know, we looked at all of these, but just wanted to point out that those are really big factors. We can go to the next slide. And then here's a snapshot of your general fund costs. You know, it is important to mention that the public works number looks really small. That's just an artifact of the fact that most of your public works are not funded through the general fund. They're not a general fund item. They're enterprise fund. So you may spend more money on public works that's indicated here, but it's just not a general fund expenditure. The other ones are pretty self-explanatory. Public safety is a pretty big component of your budget, as so is parks and rec and general government and libraries. So we can go to the next slide. So now we're going to get into the results after all those caveats and assumptions. So we can go to the next slide. So the impact for a new residential, as you can see, a single-family dwelling unit, we have, here we show the COVID, and this is the net impact, this is cost minus revenues, is pretty high on a per dwelling unit basis, much higher than a multifamily. So the single-family on a per-unit basis is certainly a higher benefit to the city than a multifamily on a per-unit basis, both under the COVID conditions and under the, what we call typical impacts conditions. You can go to the next slide. However, when you look at it in a kind of a per-acre basis, given the fact that you get generally a lot more density on a per-acre basis for multifamily than you do for they're very close in terms of the impact. And you can see here, we choose a per-acre, seven single-family units per acre, which I believe is more or less consistent with your general plan zoning. And then we chose a 60 units per acre for multifamily. Again, this is consistent with your general fund, general plan zoning outside the downtown. The downtown area, you can go more dense than that area. But you just compared seven single-family units on an acre with 60 multifamily units on an acre. The net fiscal impact of those two developments, or those two projects, would essentially be the same. And this is for looking at new residential. Again, it's important to remember, this is new residential, comparing new against new. Now, there aren't a lot of situations where you're going to have an empty acre and build seven single-family units in Redwood City. It's just not, it's not, there's just not a lot of land available. So looking at this is really a theoretical comparison. Most likely, though, you're not going to get a lot of developers coming forward with seven single-family units on an acre. So it's a little bit of a, it's really a theoretical comparison, but I think it's important and illustrative to understand how your budget operates. We can go to the next slide. So when you actually replace single-family with multifamily, the differential is much bigger because the single-family is essentially as a, what I would call a repressed assessed value, because it's been, most of them have been protected by Prop 13 on the property tax. So when you sell that, say, a single-family and you replace it with multifamily, or a multifamily development, you're going to get a much bigger boom, because you're going to get not only more units per acre, but you also get the reassessment. So this is comparing single-family with multifamily. We can go to the next slide. And this is, and again, these are just numbers. It's not a value judgment. But this is comparing an existing resident, a single-family house, with a new resident and a multifamily house. And again, and this assumption assumes that the multifamily house is a market-rate house, and the existing resident is also a market-rate house. As you can see, the new resident is much, provides a much more favorable impact on the city's general fund. And that's primarily due to the assessed values that we pointed out, that the new assessed values in that unit is going to be much higher than the existing assessed value. And also, yeah, that's the main reason for that outcome. We can go to the next slide. Now we're looking at the commercial side of the equation. So we compare office, industrial, and retail, 1,000 square feet. And you can see retail does compare better. New retail development is going to be, 1,000 squared of new retail development is going to be better than 1,000 square feet of office industrial, although the retailer, remember, has built into it the sales tax from the retail, as well as the assessed value and other factors. And office is pretty good, too, and industrial is not as good as the other two. But all three, when you're talking about new development, they're all positive. It's important to remember. They all have a positive impact. We can go to the next slide. So the next point is we're just going to compare net residents versus workers. A new resident, a single-family house, a new resident for a single-family house. The last one was an existing resident. This is a new resident, single-family house. A new resident from a multifamily house, very positive. And then one new office worker is even more positive. And that's simply the result of the fact that office property tends to be, new office property tends to have highest assessed value, and a typical office worker doesn't have the same cost burden on the city as does a resident. So because the office workers in a very high-assessed-value building, they spend money on lunch and whatnot, and they leave. They don't generate as much of a service impact as a new resident or as a new resident would. Again, all positive, though. So again, they're all positive to the general fund, because this is, these are new workers or new residents, and they're bringing in new revenue. Go to the next slide. So just to kind of sum up here, when you're looking at the fiscal impact of new uses versus replaced uses, the actual fiscal impact is going to be, the net fiscal impact is going to depend upon what you're bringing in and what you're replacing. So typically, if you're replacing something that's kind of low-density and you're bringing in something that's kind of high-density, you're going to have a positive fiscal impact. If you're bringing in something that has been protected by Prop 13 for 10, 15 years, and you're turning it over, again, positive fiscal impact, even if it's the same density, you're going to get a better impact. And this is, again, most of it's due almost entirely to Prop 13 and the low property turnover rate and depressed assessed values that Prop 13 has allowed. We assume that, you know, the cost for serving an existing resident versus serving a new resident, they're really exactly the same. We don't differentiate on the cost side of the equation, or existing employee versus new employee. They're really the same. The real thing is, the real difference here is on the revenue side of the equation. Go to the next slide. So we looked at, we looked at four case studies, and the details of this case studies are in your staff report, so I won't go through them at all. But we just thought it would be interesting to apply the analysis that we did to actual real projects in the city. And we've done that, and we were happy to answer any questions about those. We have some backup slides here on this presentation that address each one of these case studies. But for now, I think I'm going to turn it over for discussion and any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moody, and thank you, Mr. Munzer. That was really very good. I have several questions, but I'm going to allow my colleagues to speak first, because they may ask those questions, and we'll get those answers before the evening's over. I just wanted to also say that this is a study session. No formal action will occur at this meeting, but it'll be a good chance for the city council to ask questions of our staff and the consultant so that we can give you some direction going forward. So I'd like to see who on the council would like to begin, or if you have any questions or comments at this time. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica?
Hello. Hey. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Moody, for the presentation, as well, Mr. Munzer. And I wanted to ask first, can you let us know how much our, how much Redwood City is zoned for single-family zoning or residential zoning or R1 zoning?
How much of the city?
Yeah.
That is a good question. I don't think we looked at that. I would, I mean, I would say probably if you took it on a land area, it's probably the majority of the land area in terms of the number of, there's so many ways you can answer that. It could be based on land area, it could be based on a number of units, it could be based on assessed value. So there's a lot of ways to think about that, but I could probably find assessed values, I could probably find number of units, what percent of your units are single-family and multifamily pretty quickly. In terms of zoning, I would have to do a little mapping. I don't know if I have that at my fingertips, but maybe someone from city staff might have that information.
Councilmember, it's somewhere in, for zoned for single-family in terms of land area, it's somewhere in the 60, 65% range. We can get you what that exact number is. But I don't know it specifically.
Great, yeah. Well, it's good to have, I would love to know the more specifics. But yeah, it looks like our city looks similar to the rest of the Bay Area, where it's like the majority of our residential areas is zoned for single-family. And I think, you know, this presentation proved a lot of points about, not just zoning, but also the uplift in land and the value of land that there is. And I think this would be great to look into, to see how we can create more housing through ending single-family zoning. I would like to propose that to the council overall to discuss and look further into, like, have a study on that, because, you know, single-family zoning, it started in the Bay Area, has a history that starts in the Bay Area, and it's a racist history. So it's like a racist relic of like the early 1900s that was used to try and keep homes exclusive and barred many people of color, especially black people. And at the time, the person who developed the exclusionary zoning was trying to also prevent a black-owned dance hall. All of this, you know, you can read on KQED, there's an article about the Bay Area's residential land use and single-family zoning. So it's just a really racist relic of the past that was used to, you know, prohibit integration. And I think our city needs to allow more development of duplexes, triplexes, and larger because of that. I think we need to think about how this will help. The folks we talk about so much during these times, you know, when we say Black Lives Matter or end Asian hate, you know, we have to help working-class people of color as well, and that means housing them, especially during COVID. And so I think that was just an initiative that I think we ought to take on if we want there to be, you know, any more left, any more left of the working-class community, of the folks that are vulnerable. And I see, Mark, you have your hand, or Mr. Munzer, you have your hand up.
Thank you, councilmember. I just wanted to remind you, next month, I believe it's April 26, we have a study session also scheduled with the city council to talk about the regional housing needs. to talk about the regional housing needs allocation and our new housing element cycle. And at that time, um, we will start to, um, as part of that process, the city will need to zone and plan for approximately 4,500 units. And that could be a beginning time of a conversation about our various zoning districts and what they allow.
Oh, sure. What date was that? Yeah, definitely.
I believe it's April 26th.
Okay, yeah. Um, okay, thank you. 26th, thank you. That's something I'll keep in mind. And yeah, I think those are the thoughts I have for now. You know, I, oh, actually, I just wanted to point out that like, I think you also showed in your graph, I think, an argument for this idea of, I've, I've, I've seen float around. It's like other forms of taxation that would help our housing revenue, our housing fund or general fund in general, uh, in general. Like this was something that's elaborated in a briefing book by Homes Guarantee and that's by a group called People's Action. And there's such thing as a land uplift, land uplift, land value uplift tax. And so the, the, the costs, I've expressed this before in a public session, but I think it makes a great argument. Like you see a single family unit or housing, you know, it's bought at around $640,000 or $640,000 or so. And it makes, um, an extra million dollar when it's, you know, it's an additional million dollars when it sells, right? And so if we had an uplift tax, we could tax the difference. That means that million dollars could go to our funds. And so that's something that I think it, like this presentation showed me that it'd be really innovative and create a lot of revenue for us in our housing fund. To talk more specifically, I think you would have to spread, like flush that out. It's like, does it go to housing fund or general fund? But like, if we had a land value uplift tax, we could be making around a million dollars every time a single family house was sold. And I think that's something we ought to look into. As, along with other things that helps with the regulating of, of value and property and the market. Because what we need to do right now, when we cannot have access to socialized housing, we have to try and regulate the, the value of property. So that's just one way. There's multiple taxes, but I'll, I'll leave it at that for now. So thank you again for the presentation. It was very informative and, and great. Thank you.
Thank you. Would any other council member like to, to address the presentation? Councilmember G?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Mr. Munzer, Mr. Moody, thank you for your presentation. Just, uh, two questions. Mr. Munzer, first, in the beginning of your presentation, you sort of emphasized discretionary, you know, when council has to take an action. But what about the non-discretionary projects? Ones that conform to zoning and general plan? I mean, the net impacts are the same. It's just that the council doesn't necessarily have a direct way of participating or, I mean, just talk a little bit more about the non-discretionary projects a little bit. And then I have a follow-up question for Mr. Moody.
So, thank you, councilmember. So by discretionary, meaning that the city body, typically the city council, sometimes the planning commission, uh, has the final decision authority. Certainly there are a number of land use development projects that don't rise to that level, that are either by right or could be potentially approved by zoning administrator, which is a staff position. So those clearly would also have net impacts depending on what the, the use was. Typically, your larger development projects, a project of any size is going to be a discretionary planning project and would likely have to be decided by the planning commission and/or the city council. So typically, your total impacts are going to be larger with those development projects than they would be for the by right projects. But yes, there are net impacts regardless of, of who's making the decision on if the use is permitted.
Great, thank you. And then, Mr. Moody, thank you for the illustrations on the individual land use types. How does it work though with a mixed use project? Do you combine, you know, different numbers of those units? And then there's a second part to this, is a lot of the net impact is created by the reassessment of the land. How does affordable housing fit into that? Because it won't generate necessarily the same assessment as a market rate. Or maybe it does, I don't know. So those are sort of two questions, mixed use and then affordable housing.
Good questions. We did look at a couple of case studies that were, in fact, most of the case studies we looked at were mixed use projects. And it, we just, it's kind of, it's just an additive. We look at the square footage of retail and the square footage of office, say, that's thrown in. And then each one adds to the, to the total. So it's kind of like you can, you know, number of units times the average impact per unit, number of square feet of retail times the average square feet per retail. You add them up and that's the total impact. We also did look at a, a project that had some affordable housing units in it. And the affordable housing generally does, doesn't perform as well. And that's usually because it's taxed, not always, but a lot of affordable housing is tax exempt from property tax. There are requirements that will come into play in terms of when a, a developer can qualify for tax exempt status for his affordable housing component. And it's not always, it's sometimes. But in any case, the affordable housing unit, the value is taxed at a lower rate because it's, it is, it's assessed at a lower value because it is lower value. By definition, you cap the value of that property. So its assessed value is going to be lower. So generally speaking, the, uh, again, there are many issues when this, making land use decisions, but deed restricted affordable housing generally has a, uh, does not have a good benefit to the city's general fund. So that's the case there. I kind of, what was the second part of your question?
Well, no, I think you covered it in the sense that, you know, a lot of the positive net impact is because of the re, you know, reassessment and the up of, of the land. If it's deed restricted affordable, it may not be assessed as a, at a higher value. And to make sure, I guess, if, if the city is desirable of a net positive impact, it's blending the right numbers together in a project that produce a good outcome.
Yes.
Otherwise, if it is only an affordable deed restricted project, there may not be a net positive impact, if I heard you correctly, standalone.
That's correct.
And, and maybe perhaps that might be a case study looking ahead, just so that people can see that illustration. Great, thank you.
Vice Mayor Hale?
Thank you, Mayor. And for the benefit of my colleagues in the public, my internet is going in and out and my back has gone out, so I'm going to be off video for this evening. I really appreciated this presentation. It's something I've really looked forward to seeing for a long time. It was interesting to see which of my hypotheses were accurate and which were false. So thank you for that. What I wanted to offer was a couple of suggestions in terms of additional information to include in the final analysis. One is if we go to the slide on the annual net general fund impact by resident that shows the existing resident in a single family home versus a multifamily home.
Okay.
So is that multifamily home, what are we thinking about? What should we be conjuring up? What was the definition of multifamily home in your analysis?
That was a, that comparison, and we can go to it if we get there. I think not that one, go back further, keep going. Keep going, one more. I think you're talking about the one, let's go one more back. This one.
I was talking two slides forward, but.
Okay, okay.
So, so if you go two slides forward to the negative 282 compared to the 102, were you looking at, what were you looking at in terms of a multifamily home? Are you talking a duplex or are you talking a 60 unit?
Well, it's just a per unit. So it doesn't matter if it's a duplex, it's going to be the same. If, uh, so, okay, good point. So we would look, we're defining multifamily as everything that's not single family. And so a duplex would be into a multifamily. Um, and so would a, um, a 60 unit building. So we didn't, we didn't differentiate in that level of detail that you're describing. We just divided the city into two different types of, we could obviously do more analysis and get into all different types of products, whether it was a duplex, whether it was a, you know, a town home or whatever. I mean, there's so many different product types out there. We tried to keep it simple and just kept single family attached and then everything else. So that's what we, we did in that comparison.
Yeah, what's, what's telling me then is if a majority of our city is zoned for, um, for single family and it's negative, then, um, what are those opportunities for positive income? And as we, Mr. Munzer pointed out, we're heading into our, our housing element where we have to figure out how we can accommodate some 4,500 additional units of housing in the city. So I do think it would help to have a little bit more granularity on this. Are we talking larger infill? Are we talking modest infill in neighborhoods of duplexes and triplexes? So that we have that information in hand? Because I actually think that those are conversations that either the state will be having or that we'll be having and will want to have the data on. And similarly, if you go to the end of the presentation where you have the examples, that the examples were all sort of the non-residential. And I'm wondering if, that's not the slide. I'm looking for the, um, these like.
The ones with the pictures on it?
Yeah, the ones with the pictures.
So, okay, let's go all the way in. Yeah, here we go.
I've had a lot of, um, we've had a lot of developers buying up single family homes and, and flipping them, if you will. So I'd like to know what's the value of that? Or if we were to have a single family home replaced with a duplex or a triplex, what would be the value of that? So that we have the residential comparisons as well in addition to these larger residential mixed use and, um, and commercial properties. I would, I would like to see some of those case studies included.
Yeah, we could do that. I would say that the, um, the big differentiator is going to be, because of the way we've done the model, differentiator is the price point of the unit, meaning how much does it sell for? And typically, a condo or a for sale unit is going to be a more valuable than a rental unit from an assessed value perspective. So, you know, it's, it's kind of like, it's not so much whether it's a town home or a luxury condo. Because they, typically, they might actually generate more or less the same or maybe the town home's a little bit more expensive. But that's probably a bigger factor, which this, there's the sale price than whether or not it's a, um, what the, the, the actual, you know, product type is being, you know, a town home versus a, a single family. There are single, there are town homes that will sell more than, more than a single family unit. And there are condos that sell more than town home. So it is kind of, it's important to recognize that it's the sale price more than the, the, uh, the product type, if that makes sense, even though those two are related.
Yeah, so I, I understand what you're saying. I think that, uh, those examples would still be helpful because we're going to have to make financial decisions that impact zoning or zoning, zoning decisions that could impact, um, our finances. So it would help to have that fully fleshed out. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a good comment.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. And I want to thank Mr. Moody and city staff for this great presentation. I, I really think we're going in the right direction with our ability to dig into these types of concepts in relationship to our land usage in Redwood City. I, from what I'm kind of seeing and from, um, you know, the way that I'm kind of assessing the, the staff report as well as this presentation is that we exist in a delicate balance, delicate fiscal balance among land use opportunities within our city. And it's important for us to be thinking about, you know, the zoning decisions as well as the project decisions that we come down the pipe with so that we can support ourselves fiscally. I do have a question about a few of the assumptions that you made, Mr. Moody. The first question is about your statement that new office workers are not living in the community. I think that most people would generally agree with that. I'm wondering if you could provide more detail about that, either now or in a subsequent presentation about percentages? Because I would imagine it's not 100% that's not living here, but I would imagine that it is probably some high percent. And any, you know, detail about trending as well would be great. You know, if there's been an uptick or a downtick in folks moving into the city or into the surrounding areas, any detail about that would be really, really great.
Okay, why don't we stop there? I think there's a slide in our appendix that deals with this issue. But the, generally, what we did was we took account of data on how many people live and work in Redwood City? How many people commute to Redwood City? How many people live in Redwood City and commute out? And then how many people live in Redwood City and don't have a job? So all those factors were blended into an equation that came up. And here it is, right here. Now, this is obviously not a good slide for a presentation because there's too many numbers in here. But you can see, we have, you look on the left, there's not in labor force, 50, actually a pretty big number there. 56% employed in the city, these are residents. And then employed outside the city, 37% of your residents are employed outside the city. And then for employees, the next level down, live in the city, 8%. Live outside the city, 92%.
Wow.
So, so those are the numbers. We use those and it's kind of a complicated formula. I won't get into the details. But when we do all those, rank all those numbers and put them into this formula, you come out with this 40% fact. But we did take all of that into account.
Okay, got it. And then any idea like where they're living outside of the city? Is it on the peninsula or is it in San Mateo County? Or is it like in San Francisco or the East Bay?
Ooh, that's a good question. But I would say most of them are not. I've done this from another study, actually for, on the Redwood City Ferry project we looked at a while back for you guys. And, and in that case, we found that most of them do not, they don't, very few of them live in the East Bay. And that was, that was what the, that Redwood City Ferry story was about, was that you aren't really capturing a lot of people that live in the East Bay here. It's a small percent. So most of them do live in, in the, uh, either in the South Bay or in the city of San Francisco. That's where the majority of them, of that 92%. We can actually, that data is actually readily available. We could actually get it for you pretty easily on just the whole breakdown of where that 92% that live, that, that live out, if your workers that live outside, where they come from. It's every, it's, it's census bureau data, it's every single city is in there. So we could get it for you pretty easily.
Yeah, I'd really appreciate that. I mean, I guess the reason I bring up that line of questioning is just, obviously, our housing crisis is a regional issue. And I'd just love to understand how our kind of city decisions are having a regional impact. You know, whether obviously we're having impacts on our neighbors just off the street in terms of their, um, their housing needs as well. I have another question. This is specifically another assumptions based question. This is on your demographic data. So did you use the 2010, uh, 2010 census for your assumptions about population in Redwood City?
No, we use more up to date data. Your Department of Finance has it all the way up until, uh, and the census too also had, uh, it's called the, on the sources, the US Census, they update that now with these periodic updates. But we, I think we used.
And I noticed on one of the slides as well as in your staff presentation, there was an assumption that within single family homes, there was an average of 2.5 residents. And I'm just kind of wondering if we've seen any trending data around that? Because again, we've heard just a lot of anecdotal support that suggests that the amount of residents per single family home has increased over the last, you know, let's say, two to five years. So, you know, if we could get any information on that, um, I would, I would really appreciate it. I guess my last question is, is this, so in terms of increasing the top line, and this is somewhat, I realize that this may not be a readily accessible question, but increasing revenues, um, in your work with other cities, have you seen any interesting or innovative ways that cities have gone about increasing revenues so that our, um, let's say, per capita revenue basis for residents could increase incrementally?
Well, um, I think that the, the, um, that from the, from the perspective of things the city has control over, obviously, there's a lot of things that, that the city doesn't have control over. But in terms of what the city has control over, I really do believe that redevelopment and revitalization is the biggest way in which you can increase that. Because it does two. Because it does two things. It, one, it creates transactions in the market, and you get money from transactions. When property changes, you get a property transfer tax. And you also get a reassess that that assessed value gets re-triggered at the market value. So that first slide we showed you the difference between the market value and the assessed value, huge difference. When you can reset that, so it goes to market, you automatically get that huge windfall of benefit in. You don't have to pass a tax for that. That automatically happens, that's existing, that's just the way it works in California.
Well, I guess I was wondering on your thoughts about the the point that you just brought up, like um innovative kind of tax measures. Is that something that you, how do you think about that? I'm just curious.
Well, the tax measure, the tax law in California is controlled by a lot of different legal requirements that most of which require a voter by voter approval.
Sure.
It's really hard to do that. The the city council doesn't have a lot of power other than through its its property transfer tax, through its um TOT rate and a few other things that they can, they can affect. But taxes are hard to 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 approve. There are some things, but most of them require ballot measure approval.
Right. Yep, I appreciate that point. So I just have a couple of final comments. Um, I really, again, appreciate the opportunity to dig into these topics. I really look forward to the second session. Um, and I would just kind of, you know, reaffirm the point that I made earlier, which was that, you know, we're really looking um at our land use from a portfolio perspective. And I really, you know, encourage city staff as well as um, you know, our consultants as well to be looking at um, you know, what we as a city need to have to create, number one, the opportunity for housing. Of course, that is our number one priority um as well as maintaining kind of fiscal um viability. I think that that's the dynamic that we're we're really trying to get at. And I think by creating some kind of vision for what that portfolio could look like is the goal. And I would just wanna, I just wanna follow up on one thing that council, council member Lisette Espinoza Garnica said. I'm very interested in talking about um the vision for R1 zoning in our city. I completely agree with her that it has significant um racial pasts and um equity implications that stem back to the early twentieth century. And it's time that we start to discuss that in a real way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Aguirre?
I realize we're running out of time, so just one question and then some comments. Where does, um, we we talked about retail office and housing. And I want to reiterate what my colleagues have said about the importance of housing and the value that that brings to our community as well as fiscally. Where do, and but, and when I looked at retail, yes, it'd be great if we could have more retail in our city. The reality is we have mostly restaurants and entertainment. And and that's just how it's been configured, not that it can't change. How does that figure into the fiscal income, the the restaurants and entertainment?
Yeah, they um generate a lot of revenue when they're uh, when they're doing well. Obviously, they haven't been lately, but um, well, let's see, it's a little more complicated because you've had um, still some of them are doing okay. And then others are, people have switched to um, you know, other types of retail sales. But yeah, entertainment is a great source of sales tax revenue when it's, when it's doing well, when it's thriving. Um, I think you're right, though, that there's not a lot of new retail development um that's occurring. I mean, you're just not gonna get someone coming in and and proposing a brand-new, you know, um that just because land is pretty expensive and and most of the new retail development is 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 probably reusing a reconfiguring existing retail space. Not to say that will never happen, that you will get new retail development, but most of it is reconfiguring existing retail space. But uh, but yeah, I think that certainly uh dining and entertainment is a is a is a great revenue source.
Okay, um, just finally, I think it's important that we look at housing as number one fiscal in in income. But I also think it's important when you add about additional information, and I'm looking forward to our second meeting, is that we look at um the balance of outcomes as far as what do office housing and um retail bring to our city? And also what what are the things that our city city still needs? And sometimes you, we can't control it because we don't own all of the land, but we can set policy and and priorities for, as we move forward and look at at um the second section of our land use, which we know that council, one of the main things that we do are land use decisions and how important they are. So thank you, Mr. Moody and Mr. Munzer for the presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember Aguirre. Councilmember Ready, would you like to, uh, do you have any comments or questions that haven't been answered yet?
No, I don't have any uh, any questions. Thank you so much, um, Mr. Moody and Mr. Munzer for this uh very thorough report.
Thank you very much. It's been really good. Thank you to our staff and to Mr. Moody. I really appreciate the report. And more importantly, I appreciate your explanation tonight. I must admit, I was a bit overwhelmed when I read it over the weekend. And I was really, really trying hard to understand the outcomes. You made it very clear, very concise. I took good notes. I'm going to keep these with me because it was really very helpful. I appreciate that. I I did want to mention that um last week I saw a show where they were talking about reimagining and reconfiguring retail. And what a number of very uh interesting people have done who are in the mall business have decided that retail as it was may never be that way quite again. And what they have done is reconfigure either part of the the body of the mall or the basement of the mall or a certain area of the mall and have turned it into something that is very, very much in demand, which is storage. And they are making a lot of money on storage, and it is keeping the malls alive. So I just thought that was talk about reimagining and reconfiguring. I think we're going to have to do a lot more of that when it comes to retail. That doesn't mean that I don't believe that we have those, a lot of those big properties. However, if there is someone who is really trying to think outside the box, I think we need to work with them to help them reimagine what they could be doing to maybe supplement a smaller portion of retail to provide income for themselves and the city and and make the space usable instead of vacant. Mr. Moody, have you seen that at all?
Well, um, I have heard about it. I know, and certainly malls throughout the country and in California are being looked at very closely because they're all suffering. And the the trend we see a lot of is 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 basically redeveloping the model to have it a mixed use with more residential and office, and that's the biggest trend. Um, the the storage sector is a very profitable sector. You're right about that. I don't know if I've um seen many examples where uh malls have been used for storage. But I'm sure there, that's, I mean, I, yeah, I I haven't seen much of that, but I can certainly see why that might occur. And it is a, it is a, these storage uh facilities are a little profit center because they don't have a lot of maintenance, they don't have a lot of workers. It's just, you know, they just generate revenue. So I can see why that might be attractive. And also, given the fact that most retail is centrally located by definition, it's visible and it's, it tends to be centrally located. So it doesn't surprise me, although I don't have a list of examples on that.
Thank you. It's just something to keep in our minds as we go forward, trying to reimagine how our city goes forward. I wanted to ask you a question, Mr. Moody. We talked about office space versus industrial versus retail, the net impact. Where does life sciences fit on this spectrum? Is it somewhere in between office and industrial? There's a big boom in life science and biotech in our area. Doesn't quite fit into any one of these categories. Could you answer that question for me?
You know, we struggled with that in this, in this study, trying to decide. And we tried to keep it simple. Um, we won't, we almost merged on creating another land use category. But it was, you know, we, after going back and forth with staff, it became, it became more complicated than it was worth, I think. But it's a very good question. I think that the um, the the life sciences probably performs most similar to office um in terms of its, because its assessed value is generally pretty high. Um, and that's the big determinant uh in that. And they also have, um, the one thing where it may be slightly different than office is they may not have as many employees per square feet, which means it's not quite as employment-intensive as office would be. Um, in which case, it would probably make it even more profitable because the, you know, uh, the the employees generate cost because you have to serve, provide services. But the assessed values, which generates the revenue. So, you know, your ideal role from a general plan, from a general fund perspective, and this again, I want to emphasize just from a general, is you want to use the generates tons of revenue but no population. Unfortunately, that's just how the 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 system works, right? You don't want to have to spend any money maintaining it or providing services, but you want it to generate tons, you want it to be like a little cash register. And so that's the kind of the model for the best fiscal performance. And so in that respect, yeah, you could see how a life sciences um facility might be a pretty strong performer from a fiscal perspective. But I'd have to do a little more research on the employment density. That's where I I am not a hundred percent sure about that.
Well, we did receive, oh, actually, um, I went to a presentation in San Carlos where they were talking about that uh life sciences takes half the number of employees as office space. That's pretty incredible.
Yeah.
So I'd like to see if we could talk to South San Francisco or San Carlos and see if any of these questions might be able to be helpful to us.
Okay.
Mayor Howard, we can, we can do some more follow-up with those communities, agreed. Typically, the the figures that I'm given is life sciences tends to be about half the density in terms of employees as traditional office. The only caveat I would put there is that um traditional office may change in terms of its yeah, the density pre-COVID versus post-COVID. So all of that certainly is still part of the conversation. One thing I did want to mention real quickly to uh Councilmember Aguirre's point and your point uh about existing retail. We do have a number of, you know, fairly large existing retail centers on El Camino and Woodside predominantly, uh, some on Veterans. And and some of those um, you know, are are certainly opportunities for redevelopment to retain a portion of the retail, but likely include other uses, i.e. residential. So um, you know, I know city staff to a degree has been having some conversations about some existing retail center sites that, you know, retain part of that retail, but incorporate new uses. So I just wanted to provide that.
Thank you. Thank you for the additional information. I appreciate it. I also wanted to ask, I, we talked about that this net impact study uh that you're talking about is just one lens that we'll be looking through. Because if you were only to look at this study, you would say, gee, affordable housing just doesn't work for Redwood City. But it doesn't account for the fact that the values that we hold in our community is to provide more affordable housing for people in our community. So I I just want to be sure, at the end of the day, as we're bringing projects forward, Mr. Munzer, that I I'm guessing we'll probably have more information to balance out one study or another. As both um Councilmembers Smith and Gee said, we have to find the right balance for our community. And that doesn't mean we go all the way in one category or another. We we have to remember that there's a balance we have to strike, and there are values that we want to respect.
Yes, um, certainly, we'll keep that in mind as we bring projects forward. Certainly, there's the city's priority of creating affordable housing that is so important. And then, of course, we have state requirements to create affordable housing. So um while fiscal impact is a lens, um, there's real regulatory and community priorities that, you know, we continue to want to advocate for.
And an environmental impact report would address some of the other issues that have been brought up around traffic congestion and noise. And that that would be addressed with the economic, I mean, excuse me, the EIR or the environmental impact report, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'd like to ask you, do you feel that you were given direction as to these questions that you were asking us? Do you feel that you could use more information in any one of the three questions?
Uh, thank you for asking, Mayor. No, I think we have, we do have some follow-up to do for sure uh in terms of getting a little bit more information in life sciences, talking about the uh turnover potentially of single-family to something else. So that's this type of input that we were looking for. We know, to your points, Mayor, at the beginning, we know it's a lot to take in. Uh, I had the benefit of reading this seven or eight times um and 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 still need Mr. Moody and his group's assistance a lot. So uh, we wanted to introduce the topic. Again, we'll be back later in the summer um for a follow-up study session that's more geared towards um community benefits of of hypothetical development projects. And then in the meantime, we will make the memo, uh, the final product accessible certainly to the city council and also the public.
Thank you for reminding us we're having another study session on community benefits later in the summer. Thank you. Well, if there are no further questions, uh, I'd like to move on to public comment and see if anyone in the public would like to address this particular issue. I'll take public comment on this study session item. In order to see how many speakers we have, I would like to ask anyone who would like to speak to please raise your hand now. At this time, I have two speakers. Would anyone else wish to make a comment before we move to the regular council meeting? Okay, I I have two speakers. The last speaker is Ryanne. Anyone who would like to add comments after the two speakers, they can send their comments to council@redwoodcity.org. I would like to ask each speaker to speak for two minutes, if they may, as we have a very, very full agenda tonight. So if you don't mind, I will call Mr. Willard and then Ryanne.
Hello, so um, I sort of am fond of 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 putting things in black and white when it comes to uh finance and numbers and budgets. By the way, thank you for this analysis to the folks who did it. So in a nutshell, gentrification is profitable for the city and county. Because uh when people sell their single-family dwellings, the best thing to do is to build a bigger single-family dwelling. And uh such property value increase returns more in property taxes to the city as well as the county. It's sort of too bad, but that's it, black and white. As a sort of amateur studier of economics, uh, I know that no one can price the loss of a person of color in this community. Any matter than they can compute the cost of a life lost by however that happens. It's kind of a goofy question I asked one of my uh grad school economics professors. Uh, and she said, yes, of course, I nailed it. So uh, I don't know what figure you all will come up with to account for uh the gentrification and might I say, white-ification of Redwood City over time. But I don't give a rat's backside about more cube glass-filled office towers. Homes, multifamily, five stories, if that's what it takes.
Thank.
And so thank you for that. I wanted to express um support and gratitude for um the stuff that Councilmember, we said Espinoza Garnica was discussing um in her comments. And I uh just wanted to say that I think it's really great that we're talking about the issue of uh si- single-family housing versus multi- multifamily housing. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments. If you weren't able to provide public comment tonight. Please email your comments to thecitycouncil@redwoodcity.org. We will begin the next city council meeting in 10 minutes. We're going to be adjourning to that next meeting. Please note, there is a separate meeting ID on Zoom for that meeting. So if you have joined us via Zoom, please be sure to refer to our city website for instructions on how to join that meeting. Thank you all so much and we'll see you in 10 minutes.